Hunt for Greatness Podcast.
Any, 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 anything because they twist everything.
Hey, you're on now. You're, you're being recorded, right? Gotta tell my man when he's being recorded. Guys, welcome to the Hunt for Greatness Podcast. I'm your host, Lex Hunt. I got my man Jonathan Uscategui on tonight and I'm.
My wife.
Hope, Jonathan's wife, Hope. And look at these shirts, guys. Red, white, and blue. Jonathan, what's up, man?
How you doing, my friend?
Thanks for coming to do this.
Thank you for the invite. I'm.
You're running for city council, dude.
Wilmington City Council.
Wow.
Yes, crazy.
That, that is crazy because the last time you were on, we were talking about political stuff and I'm like, I feel like this man might, might do something, might do something important.
Well, you know, I felt like, uh, it was two choices. I could've just stayed, see everything unfolding in front of me, keep doing what I was doing, making my money and not do nothing about it and become a bystander or say, no, I, I can't do this. So I decided to, you know, do something about it, not just talk about it, do something about it.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, well, that's awesome. Yeah, you seem like a doer. You seem like you're a doer, you know, like you plan something out that you wanna do. You seem like you go, you're a go getter. Jonathan owns his own, uh, jujitsu business as well.
I also have a restaurant.
And a restaurant.
And a food truck.
Wow.
And I'm a solid, uh, partner in construction business, so.
Wow, that's awesome. Small business advocate.
Yes, sir. Capitalism one on one, right there.
How could you not be a small business advocate when you own two or three small businesses, guys? And you're a black belt in jujitsu. Just wanna throw that out there. Just talk about some of your background.
Well, I, you know, I, like I said, I own three, four, you know, three and a half, three, four business now. I'm a black belt in judo. I boxed for seven years. I'm a black belt in judo and jujitsu. You know, all my life I've been, you know, very dedicated. When I commit to something, like you say, I'm, I'm a go getter. I believe, and I learned something when I came to this country, obsession is a necessity to become successful.
Obsession is a necessity to become successful.
Yes, and I always live by that. I get obsessed about something and I will not stop until that happen, you know? It's just an obsession. I'm pretty sure my wife don't like that about me.
She probably loves that.
Dragging her around.
It could go either way. It's a, it's a coin that's could be, it can be good or it can be bad, you know? I'm the same way. Obsession is a big part of who I am. I obsess about things, like every little detail.
It's a necessity to become successful, you know? When somebody call you weird because you're obsessed, in my world, um, um, this is normal.
It's always been, ever since you were a little kid?
Since I was a little kid. I was al- always been that way, obsession about things and, you know, I always accomplish what I wanna accomplish, so it worked for me, so I'm happy with that.
Grew up in Venezuela.
Grew up in Venezuela. I came here, you know, well, the first time I came, I was eighteen years old. And I used to go back and forth to, you know, things got really bad, couldn't go back to Venezuela and I decided to, you know, stay and settle more in the United States, so.
When'd you decide to kinda stay here for good? How old were you? Roundabout, roundabout, you don't have to give it exact.
Man, it's been so, like, in my twenties.
Twenties, and how old are you now?
Forty, forty what? Forty-seven, forty-eight.
Yeah, I can't, I'm thirty-one. I can barely remember what my age is when people ask me. I wanna be like twenty-five.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember, to be honest. I don't even remember my birthday, never. My wife always remind me my birthday. I never.
That's so sweet. That's so sweet.
Tell you that.
Are you guys like polar opposites or are you cl- like, polar opposites?
Yeah, yeah, she's.
Do you ever do jujitsu with them?
Oh yes, I'm a black belt in Brazil.
Oh, you're a black belt too? Holy shit. Oh my god, that's crazy, dude. Two black belts. That's awesome.
Yeah, so.
So she, have you tra- has she trained with you the whole time?
She's a two-time world champion.
Wow, dude, that's crazy. You guys are badass. That's awesome.
I'm not, just.
Oh, you're badass. I seen that boy measuring your neck up there at Joseph A. Bank. Did he tell you that? I saw that boy measuring your neck. I said, he's got a jujitsu neck. And he goes, I didn't recognize you with that face diaper on your. Oh, man. Yeah, you gotta have a big, thick, strong neck for jujitsu kinda, don't you?
My, it's nineteen and a half, so it's pretty thick.
So what is city council? I definitely want you to answer that because some people listening, including myself, don't know exactly what city council is.
Well, it's a really good question and it's very important that we learn exactly what that is. City council is a legislator in the local level. That's what city council is. Like you have congress, the state congress, federal congress. City council become that legisla- legislator, but in the local level, something that is very important that.
Legislator makes laws.
Yeah, we make the law. We would be making the law that affect you in a daily basis.
Absolutely.
You know, this is something that, when they pass something, it's gonna affect you right away, like, uh, they can have a meeting Tuesday and pass something that Tuesday, it will be affected probably in ten days. You'll be dealing whatever they pass, whatever law they pass. So it affects you very fast and right away. The state and the federal is not so affecting your life right away, but in the local level will affect you right away.
So would city council have had something to do with, uh, Texas, like how they passed that law about abortions? Do you know what I'm talking about?
No, that's a more in the state.
Okay, that's a state level.
That will be our, our, you know, our, our house and senate and rally.
So you would directly affect Wilmington?
Yeah, this is exactly only the city of Wilmington.
Oh, wow.
You know, so this is personal, like.
It's important.
Very important. I don't think a lot of people understand how much power the local government have. Uh, they say that the real true politics is in the, in, in city council, county commission, in your local level. That's the real true, you know? The things that affect you once again in your daily life, so I, I think people need to understand and get more involved in voting in the local level.
I, I agree a hundred percent, cuz it's like, these guys are ground level. Like, these guys are the ones walking around on the same ground we're walking on.
Exactly.
Not up on the hill in DC, but right here in Wilmington, North Carolina, so.
You know these people, you know, like myself. How many people don't know me? That I have the restaurant now, the food truck, uh, my gym, you know, they've been there for so long and they know you. These people know you, they, like you. You see me, you saw me in the plays, hey Jonathan? Am I pass something, you might not agree and then you might just bring it into my attention. And then I have to deal with that, you know? I cannot just ignore you. Uh, or you might like something that I done, recognize and congratulate me.
Yeah.
And I will be pretty happy about it.
Absolutely, absolutely. So it sounds like you're kinda in this thing for the right reasons.
I, I think so. I believe so. I.
I mean, you're in it to help make Wilmington better, right?
Make it great again.
Make it great again. I like that.
That's one of my logos and my bumper stickers and t-shirt. Let's make Wilmington great again. That's pretty much it.
Yeah, that's awesome. And you've, you've done a great job advertising, by the way. I know I already told you that, but I wanted to say it on the podcast.
Thank you so much. Yeah. I have a team behind me, you know, that I hire to, to, to do all these things because I, I feel like I had no experience being in the political field, so I figure I need to bring the experts to, to do this type of, you know, job to accomplish what I feel we're gonna accomplish November second.
Shouts to the team. Shouts to the team.
Thank you to all the guys.
They're doing a hell of a job.
They're working behind this and, you know, I'm very excited and happy.
Yeah.
You know, that I got the right people.
Yeah, for sure. I think you did. And you were saying before we, we started recording that city council technically is a bipartisan position.
It's supposed to be a bipartisan.
So what does that mean? Do you, I mean?
Well, it, it, what it mean is that, you know, I am a Republican. I've always been a Republican. I'm a conservative, right? So when you go in there, you're not gonna see in the voter ticket, Republican or Democrat. All you're gonna see.
I got you.
It's a name and that's it.
I got you.
Person, but it's not gonna have the D or the R for Republican or D for Democrat.
So if it doesn't have that on your ballot, then it's a bipartisan position?
It's a bipartisan position.
Okay, I didn't know that cuz when I voted, I believe when I went and voted, uh, the last election, that there were some things on there that didn't have a R.
It's like if it's like local county commission, school board of education.
So it's more local level that's gonna be bipartisan? Okay.
Then when you go to state and all that, then you're gonna see Republican or Democrat.
Oh, okay. Maybe it did.
Midterm elections are coming, twenty-two, and you're gonna see Democrat, Republican on the ballots.
When do people need to go vote? Let's make sure we say that.
Registration for the, the last day for registration to vote, it is October eighth.
So very, what's, it's almost that now?
Yeah, we're almost there.
It's October. You got two days, people, if you hadn't registered to vote. Actually, this podcast probably won't be out until after that, so that's, I mean.
Well, early voting beginning October fourteenth.
Okay, October fourteenth. Then you'll have a designated place to go vote, correct?
Go to my website, uscategui for city council.
Spell it. U Z C A T E G U I.
Yes.
And I did not just read his hat. I knew it. I knew how to spell it.
But you can always go to my website and then we'll have information there about the days where to vote. I believe we even have the application to fill it up, to register to vote on my website. We, we try to, you know, bring as much information to the voters. So they understand if they have a question, they can always contact us and then we'll help them out. Doesn't matter what political party, a hundred percent.
We gotta make it easy for kids like me, cuz we grew up where it's like, we don't want it to load or nothing. We're just done with it, you know? I'm thirty-one, so we need, like, I'll call my mom over everything. I'll, I'll, I'll get a letter in the mail and it'll be about some insurance information. I'm like, Mom, about to send you a picture of this letter. I want you to read it and then call me back and tell me what the hell it's talking about. But yeah, no, that's great that your website kinda walks.
Yeah, it helps people to, to understand the process easily.
Yeah.
And they can always get in touch with us and somebody will, will answer the question, you know? Sometime I, I, today I had a few phone calls from people randomly called me. They got the number and then, you know, I answered the phone. They were surprised. I said, wow, I'm glad that you, you answered. I said, well, you know, I, I wanna talk to the people, you know, so was very, you know, glad that I was able to do that and I gave, gave them some information and then now they're registering. They'll be voting.
How long's the term for city council?
Four years.
So you'll be city council for four years?
Yes.
And is your opponent a black belt in judo and jujitsu as well?
No, I don't have a point. There's.
I just feel like, dude, if you're a black belt, there's, in anything, there's so much integrity there. And like, that is, that means so much to a person like me that you have had the self-discipline and the integrity to get, to, to, to commit to something that you knew nothing about at some point in your life and ride it all the way to the top. Like, that's so badass to me and it says a lot about you as a person.
Yes.
And I mean, just, just to me, like, a lot of these guys out here are frauds. They're fakes. They're plastic. You know, they're not real. And like, to have somebody that's running for office that, like, I've, I can just, I could tell by the first time I talked to you on the phone, I'm like, this dude is genuine. Like, he ma- he means what he says.
I do mean what I say.
Yeah, I, I just knew, but, and then when we had the podcast, I'm like, alright, this guy is committed to the commitment, you know what I'm saying? And like, that's rare nowadays.
Well, thank you. I think I was, I, I gotta thank my parents for that. They raised me to be that, that way. My dad, my mom, so I'm, I'm very thankful for, thank you for saying that.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, it just says a lot about you if you start something and finish it, you know?
Yeah.
But something like jujitsu, to master that and to have your own school, and I'm sure you're always still learning.
Oh, yeah. You never stop learning.
Never stop learning. And I think that's also a, a great trait for somebody who's running for office to have is to be able to be teachable.
Exactly. You gotta be humble, you know? I believe the, the time where you're no longer learning is when you're not, when you're dead. That's it.
For sure.
If you're not, oh, you just quit on everything. You just don't wanna learn. And jujitsu, when you become a black belt in Brazilian jujitsu, they calling you're a dirty white belt.
They say you're a dirty white belt.
Yeah, you still.
Cuz you still don't know shit?
Yeah, I feel that way. I don't know anything, even though I teach a lot of people and.
That's what I'm trying to instill in my son, like that, what you just said, like, being able to start something and finish it.
Yeah, it's very important.
We had, uh, I mean, just took him to his, to his tee ball game tonight and he wouldn't go up to bat because he didn't have his helmet. And I'm like, I said, you got one chance to go up there and go bat or we're going home. I was like, I'll get you a new helmet if you go up there and bat, and he wouldn't go. And I'm like, pack your stuff up and get in the car. And I don't know if we handled it right, but this is how we handled it. I was like, pack your stuff up, get in the car, let's go. I was like, if you're not gonna go up to bat for your team, this is a team sport, like, it's not just about you. Like, your team needs you to go up there and I gave him multiple chances to go up there, so.
I think you did the right call.
I mean, I was like, get in the car, let's go. No, you can't watch your iPad before bed. You gotta go straight to bed. You're gonna sit in there. I mean, I don't know, but I just want, I wanna instill values in him that are, the things that are important to you and I.
Actions have, you know, consequences. He chose not to do what he was supposed to do and the, the consequences that you're gonna be, there's no iPad. I think you did a right call.
Alright, good. I, I wanted to say something, cuz it was, it bothers me, like, everything that we do, not, not, it doesn't bother me to discipline him. It just bothers me to think about, am I doing the right thing here? Like, is this instilling the value of integrity, of, uh, selflessness, like?
Discipline.
You have discipline. You have to go up there and swing the bat. You gotta, you got to attempt.
No, I, I think you did a great, that was a great goal.
Yeah.
I promise.
It's, okay, but the whole point is like, the, the values you have and that I have, I want to instill that in the younger generation?
Yes, very important.
So you said you were talking to some high school kids the other day?
It was yesterday. I went to Hager High School.
Yeah, how'd that go? Can you, can you explain that a little bit?
It was, it was, they have a, a young Republican group in there, so I got invited by the, the guy in charge of the group. And I went, I started talking to the kids and letting them know that we are in the greatest country in the world. Uh, America is the, the most general, the most compassionate, the most tolerant country in the world. And so I had a, a group of kids that their faces started kinda not being okay with what I was saying and I understood, so I approached him and, and right after I finished that, I'm from, I, I explained it first. I'm from Venezuela. I came here and, you know, I was, it's nothing but blessings. I moved to this country and I'm being very grateful. So I just wanted to let you all know that you guys live in the greatest country in the world and, you know, I told them everything I just say. And then that group sitting on, in a corner, they were making faces, kinda like questioning what I just said. So I approached him and right when I got close to them, I said, does anybody have a question? And right on point, they raised their hands and one started talking about, uh, well, capitalism is actually not helping people. And I say, why would you say that? Well, because more people are being oppressed, uh, uh, of things. They didn't even know what they were saying. I can tell. And I said, no, son. I think capitalism is the idea. Capitalism has led more people from property than any o- any other idea in the world, so you're wrong. This is wrong. Who's telling you these things? So he tried to go on his phone and I said, no, you don't have to go on your phone. If you're opening your mouth and say something that they should know already what it's all about, what are you gonna pull there?
Like, give me something. You know what I mean? You know?
But he didn't know, so he went in and, you know, you could see there in his face, it was something that he heard from somebody.
Yeah.
And I didn't wanna attack him or say anything, so I left it up. And then another child asked a question because, uh, we were talking about, uh, how important is to have less government, more freedom to the people. The bigger the government, the less freedoms we have. So a young lady say, well, I don't agree with that because with those freedoms, people can do things like, you know, hurt other people. So I said, what did that mean? What did you mean with that? And she went in to say, well, you know, she, she didn't know how to express it. Finally, I kinda like, I asked her over and over, I thought we just make it into, uh, uh, make it simple. Just tell me what you're, you're trying to say. And she finally said it. Well, in this country we have white privilege. And that's, I feel that it's bad with all these liberties. We have white privilege because of liberties. She understood that in her head, liberties are consequences. That's why we have white privilege. But you can tell she didn't know that. It's like she heard it from some, somebody's been telling this thing. Pretty sure it's schools where she's learning all these things. Hope that there's not the parents saying that. And then I went and explained to her, I say, I went, sweetheart, let me tell you something. There's no such a thing as a white privilege. And if it is, can you explain that to me? And she didn't know. I just played, I said, look, I am an immigrant from Venezuela. At the age of twenty-four, I was almost a millionaire in this country. I came here with nothing. I was very successful at the age of twenty-four. I made so much money and nobody impaired me to do that. So explain to me, why would you say something like that to, to me? Well, because I said, look, she didn't know what to say and I pointed out something out. Look, we have so many immigrants in this world that would risk everything to move to this country. Do you think it's because we're racist? Do you think it's because we're not tolerant? Do you think that? I came here because of that. I love the freedom this country. It's allowed me to have. And you gotta understand, I'm telling you, you, you're never being anywhere. You don't understand that. And that statement should be enough for you to at least question this white privilege narrow that you learned from somewhere else. And you can see their faces. They were like, they didn't understood. They're like, why is this guy saying all these things? It's confusing everything we learn. I'm pretty sure. I, I forgot to ask, but I didn't wanna do it because I didn't wanna like, you know, the school allowed me to be there. Are you learning this in school? But I can tell, like I said, I pray it's not the parents.
Yeah.
But I feel.
That's probably some parents.
Yeah, well, I finished the conversation. We shake hands. Uh, I told them, thank you so much for asking those questions. We might not agree on the same things, but in the end, we can still shake hands.
Right. There was discourse there.
Yeah, and they were happy.
That, that right there was the lesson they needed to learn. Not to view things like you viewed them, but to learn that you can have disagreements with another person and still shake hands after. Kids don't understand that.
I told them, that's part of our freedom, see?
Yeah.
You don't agree with what I say. I don't agree what you say, but I still gonna shake your hand and I still gonna thank you for asking me those questions.
Right. And there's no malice or ill will between us after that.
And they were very, you know, you could tell they were, it was just very, you know, uh, I'll show you here.
Probably a new experience for them to be able to.
It was.
That's so cool. You got to give that to them and to yourself as well. You got to go there and be like, okay, well, we disagree, but, oh, that's so cool. That's awesome. So you were talking in front of a whole class?
Yeah, so they were, they were, in the end, you could tell they were like, well, this is very interesting. This immigrant came here and it was telling us that America is the best country in the world. And he was defending the country, like, uh, you know, as an immigrant, when you become an American citizen, you swear an O to protect this nation. And I took it very serious. That O that I took, you know, when I became an American citizen, is very serious to me. We need to protect this nation. If we don't protect it, who's gonna be there when this nation's under attack, like right now, you know? So I, I just wanted them to understand that. That an immigrant was telling them that we are in the greatest country.
It's so powerful. That's such a powerful message.
They were, they were shocked. I'm telling you.
That's so cool.
They were shocked. They were like, what is going on here, you know?
So it's, it's such a win, though. Like, what you did's such a win for the reason that we talked about earlier, that they can disagree.
Yeah, of course.
And still like, shake hands at the end.
Exactly.
But also, it's a win because you know at least one kid is questioning one thing that happened, at least, and it's probably way more.
And I didn't say anything bad. All I say is, I love this country.
You share your personal experience. How can that be wrong? Like, how can that be wrong?
Exactly.
That's what I was trying to tell people about COVID. Like, I got COVID and it, it messed me up. Like, I could barely move. Like, I was, it was bad. Way worse than I thought for me. And I got ivermectin, which is the, they're saying horse tranquilizer or horse dewormer is what they're saying. Like, a lot of people.
Joe Rogan took it.
Yeah, Joe Rogan took it. So I was like, alright, I'm gonna take it, you know? Like, if, if that dude's taking it, he knows some shit. Like, he's smart. I took it. Twelve hours later, I could mow the grass, you know? But that was my personal experience, so you can't tell me that it didn't work because I took it.
And you got the receipt.
Less than twelve hours later, I was mowing the grass when I could barely move in here.
Yes, that's.
You know, so it's like, everybody, I, I just feel like the whole shit with COVID, and we don't have to get into it, but the whole shit with COVID is like, they don't want to have a solution for it. Like, they don't want that medicine to work because they want you to go get a vaccine and they want you to do all this other stuff. And it's just like, why, why is it political even in the first place?
The pharmaceutical industry make more money, the more medicines you take.
And they fund a lot of those guys up on the hill as well.
So you, I, I look at it that way, you know? And like I said, I don't wanna get into it now.
Yeah, let's don't get into it. But I just wanted to tell you that, like, just like you have your personal experience with being an immigrant and this being the greatest country in the world, and like, you don't believe in white privilege, like, that is your experience and it really can't, like, there's really no argument, you know? Just like somebody else.
Couldn't argue. They were.
Just like somebody else could've grown up in the inner city of Baltimore and there be, uh, racism from police. Or that might be what they grew up around, like, police racism, uh, shootings, violence, drugs, uh, like, uh, selling drugs and all that, like, they could've grown up around that. That's gonna influence their, probably their political beliefs and their outlook on life in general, because we all don't start here.
Exactly.
Like, you, you started here and you get, came to America and you made it. You know what I mean? A lot of people, that's not their experience.
Well, you know, it's, it's had to do with education, the, the, you receiving in your home. It's gonna start there, you know, and I don't see sometime, you know, parents are not probably doing their, their job, teaching, raising their kids right. And that's the result. When you have entitlement, and the school system, I believe, is not doing their job too. It's more about, from what I gather, talking to these kids yesterday and all the things that I'm seeing around, it's more indoctrination.
It's definitely indoctrination.
The education.
Absolutely. And it's ten times worse when they get to college.
Oh, yeah.
It's ten times worse when they get to.
I was in UNCW helping the Republican group the day before yesterday. We, I actually helped to sign up, probably nine people.
Really?
Yeah, I'm involved in that too. And there were some people that would walk by the, we had a table where they say the Republican UNCW group and the faces that were making was like, we were the Antichrist. I was like, oh my. If they only knew, if they only gave us a chance to maybe talk to us, they know that we're not bad. But I think it's the media and politician pushing a narrow to, to make everybody divided, you know? It's, it's very important that divided, the more divided we are, the more these people are gonna be in power.
Well, easy, divide and conquer. We get divided, it's easier for them to conquer us. And it's important that a politician, I'm not, I guess you're considered a politician or you will be when you win?
I don't know if I will be a politician, though.
I'm just saying, so you're running in, in politics. And I think it's important for somebody like that to admit that, you know, big government, less freedom.
Exactly.
And, and like, to, to say that they wanna divide us, so it's easier for them to conquer us. That's important for somebody who's.
Hey, united we stand, divided we fall. So that's something that, it's gonna take us to have individual responsibility and start getting the knowledge that we need to get, to get ourselves back on track, you know? That's the way I look at it.
Man, I agree a hundred percent.
We have to do our part. I'm doing my part.
You're definitely doing your part. And you said, early voting is October eighteenth?
October fourteenth, beginning.
Fourteenth.
Early voting.
And I saw on your sign on Market Street.
November second.
November second, yeah.
It's election day. It's when all the polls are gonna be open and hopefully we'll wrap this up before that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Are you tired?
I'm exhausted.
You are? Have you been doing a lot of interviews and stuff?
Well, you know, here and there, speaking in events and, you know, talking to people, uh, doing door hanging, uh, putting yard signs in places. You mentioned handling my business.
I was gonna say, is it taking a toll on just how much energy and time you can put into your private?
Well, right now, my, my, my businesses are on hold. I haven't done nothing to my business for six months.
Damn.
Yeah, um, it's a sacrifice, you know? This is a sacrifice to, to do something like that. And I understand a lot of people are not gonna, you know, they're gonna be skeptical to, to do the type of sacrifice, but once again, early in the conversation, I told you, obsession is a necessity to become successful. So when I say that, I pray, I told my wife that I was gonna do this. She, she's a very strong supporter of mine. And, you know, I said, I'm gonna go. So I knew I was gonna have to go all the way in. There's no halfway there. I started campaigning probably late January. So a lot of people started campaigning, maybe two months ago. I've been doing campaign for almost, what, seven?
My boy called me, said, he said, I saw your boy. He was talking about you. He said, I saw your boy in Backwater Guns, a full body cutout. I was like, who are you talking about? He said, Uscategui. I'm like, no shit, really? He said, yeah, it's in Backwater Guns.
Yeah, it's a, it's also, what is that place called? Best Shop? Well, it's a shooter's choice.
Shooter's Choice, yeah, yeah.
Best shop, best shop.
Yeah.
I have, also have another wives, a three by six poster there that I have too. I, I did it for, uh, the gun shop, cuz I'm a very strong advocate for the Second Amendment.
Yeah, me too.
So I, I, I did it just for then and, uh, we had a lot of feedback.
Yeah, that's genius.
My goodness, people were being texting me, that post has been shared all over the, the state.
That's so cool.
And, you know, I'm happy and.
Yeah, that's awesome. I think that's literally, that's free speech. So the First and Second Amendment are so important to me.
The second was put in there just in case the first didn't work.
Exactly, dude, exactly. But yeah, those, those are very important to me. I'm not saying any other stuff's not, but being able to, that, we have a podcast. We can say whatever we want. Nobody's gonna come in here with AK-47s, cuz that's a communist gun, cuz they wouldn't come in, in here with AR-15s, I hope.
Yeah.
But nobody's gonna bust in here with AK-47s.
We, we gotta do our part because, you know, as things are looking right now, it's not looking good.
Not looking good. You know what? Not looking good, not looking good on YouTube, not looking good on Facebook, not looking good on Instagram, not looking good on Twitter. Not, definitely not looking good on Google. It's a lot of the, uh, it's a lot of the left censorship of speech I see, you know? And that's one thing that turns me so away from, like, you can't tell me how to talk, like, this is a. Like, you can't tell me how to talk, like, this is America. You're not gonna tell me what I can and can't say.
Well, it's true. I, that's where I came here. That's what I love about this country, that, that, that's why a lot of immigrants come here.
You think we're gonna have to fight for it? Cause it seems that way. It seems that way right now.
I tell you one thing, I, I tell people all the time, I watch this movie Foreign Spanish and I'm watching it in English. And I know how the movie's gonna end if we don't do something about it. That's what I decided to, you know, put my life in, in, it's an expulsion, running for office. Especially as a conservative, it's really, really tough. Think about the media, it's all pretty much on the left side.
Absolutely.
Uh, social media is on the, the newspapers, reporters, majority, a lot of reporters are very liberal. And not even liberal, this days, I don't even, I question that because these days you have conservatives, liberals and lefties. So the left is the one that is pushing the narrow today. Liberals are right now looking like conservatives.
Yeah, really. I agree.
So it is, it's questionable, you know, like, you don't get a fair shop a, a lot of times. Because you're a conservative. It's like, you, you stink, you know, so. It's hard. It's really hard.
Yeah, for sure. And I, and I hope what happens is that it's so, it's getting. That stuff's getting pushed so far to the left that people will realize that we can't, like. This podcast is crazy sometimes, guys. Like, we cut up and talk trash on here and have comedy. I have a bunch of comedians on here. And like, but when I'm talking to you, we're face to face and this is like real. You know, this is real conversation, you know, and it's like, it's not gonna be edited. It's gonna be from start to finish. It's us, you know? So like, this is real. And it's so hard to get reality with CNN, even Fox, any of the news outlets. It's hard to get anything that's like, without ten, fifteen blankets covering it up. Where you, where it's hard for the, it's hard for the normal person to do the research to figure out what's real and what's not.
And we don't have, I believe we just don't have the time. A lot of people don't have.
They don't, they don't.
The right and the left, the conservative movements in time, they're pushing an arrow to, to get a reaction. The left is pushing an arrow to get a reaction. So we're caught up in the middle of this. We just wanna hear the news. Let us make our conclusion.
Right, right.
Just give us the numbers, give us the facts. And that's it. We made that decision.
I don't need you to think for me. Like, give me what, give me what's going on and I'll come with a conclusion.
It is sad because the news supposed to be the watchdog of the people. To let us know when something is going wrong or bad. They're the ones that's supposed to be there to let us know. If politicians do something wrong, they're the ones. Hey, so and so, it's not doing their job, let us know that. You know, when something good happen, let us know that too. But that's not what they're doing for so long. They're just pushing narrows, propaganda. And that's something that I saw in Venezuela.
Dangerous, dangerous.
People don't understand Hugo Chavez didn't got put there by the people. It was got put there by the very wealthy in the media in our country, Venezuela. That's how Hugo Chavez got there. Because they told that they were gonna be able to control Hugo Chavez when he got in power. But things backfired because Hugo Chavez understood how much power he has. And pretty much turned around and said, nope, I'm not gonna be under control of anybody. And what did these people do? Left the country. Came to here, to United States, went to Europe. And I, I'm, I'm, cause it's, it's kinda scary. Today, you see pretty much the same thing. Politicians being pushed by the media. With their intentions, not, they're not giving us a choice to know the real truth about behind politicians. It's just propaganda. And some people believe that. They don't do their homework and find out if that's true or not. So there you have it. What you just say, it's just, we're not gonna know what happened, you know? So I, I'm scared of that too, you know, cause the media is, man, supposed to be there to let us know what really is going on. And they're not doing it. So we have to do our own resources.
That's why I love podcasts, because I can get, I can get your honest opinion, no matter how messed up it is. Or how politically incorrect it is, I can get an honest opinion. I can get your feedback. So I wanna ask you a couple more questions. We'll wrap it up. So. Uh, I think you kinda already went over this, but something that you didn't expect or account for when running for office. Like, what was something? And I think you were kinda talking about, uh, what, you were saying something earlier about it.
Well, you know, uh, and I don't wanna get into it a lot. I went to an interview in, uh, to January fifth. America's Newsboys got me to go over there to do an interview and I did it.
Where was this? In Wilmington?
In Washington DC.
Oh, in DC.
The fifth. I went there, I was there at the fifth in DC. And what do you know, somehow. Somebody from the Democratic Party posted on social media, oh, we have an insurrection trying to run for Wilmington City Council. They saw my poster from Backwater and that we can't have somebody that loves guns in city council. You know, they're always attacking me. Looking for something to nitpick and destroy my character. That's something that, you know, it's kinda like, man, this, your private life is gone. It's no longer there. You're gonna have to be exposed. When I declare, uh, my campaign, I got probably how many death threats? Three or four death traps. By local Black Lives Matters. They don't wanna meet.
Death threats.
Yeah. Well, I don't know if there was damp, but there was some groups there, you know, they were saying very, you know, nasty thing. We gotta take this person down. We gotta make sure that we, we hit him on the street, you know? I just started laughing. I was like, man, these people are crazy. You know, I came from a third world country. Good luck with that. To think you're gonna intimidate me, that I'm gonna back up from this. I'm, I gotta tell my wife, good luck on that. I enjoy that, you know?
Said, I enjoy that. Y'all hear that? He enjoys it.
Fighting is, I enjoy that. So I don't have a problem with that. That's probably what I'm running because. I feel that, you know, that I'm gonna be the voice for the people of the city, especially the conservative people that I think being. Pretty much pushed to the side, you know? It's a lot of things that I see in the city council right now that scare me, scare me, you know? We're going in a very radical, lefty way, and even in the local level. And that scared me, you know? I got endorsed by the Police Bu- Novo Association, the PVA. They endorsed my campaign. I was very happy with that. And it's a lot of issues. I'm running on law and order. Try and make sure to help the small business, that I'm in a small business. Uh, make sure that we, the building around this city is more, you know, in a sensible way. Some more.
Conservative.
Conservative way. You know, have some more fiscal responsibility, not just approving, approving budgets for programs. But we don't have the money to spend on that. So that equal, we're gonna have to raise tax, taxes. So I'm, I'm running in a very conservative platform. And, you know. It, it, I think that a lot of people might not like that, you know? A lot of people want to go really to the left with these things. So we'll, we'll see how it turn. I think, is, I feel that if the conservative movement come this elections. Weekend, I, I will win. I will take that easily. Cause the conservatives, we're the majority. I honestly believe conservatives are the majority in this country. They're just somehow, somebody decide to label us silent majority. We need to change that. No more silent majority. We need to be the loud majority everywhere in the state, the county, you know, the federal government, all over the country. Otherwise, I think the left is gonna walk all over us.
As they already. You gotta get your ass up and vote.
Yeah, that's all, that's how I believe we can do things. Changing things in the local level and pushing to the state. And then going out all the way to the federal level.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Now, you've given me multiple reasons, but Jonathan Uskateki, why should I vote for you?
Well, you, I think you should vote for me because I'm gonna be a straightforward with what I'm doing. One. There, the things that I'm running on is to make sure that we have some more conservative. Voice in city council. Uh, look, I tell you one thing, we're spending close to a million dollars in something called. Diversity, Equity and Inclusion. Words like, things like this are heard in Venezuela last time by Hugo Chavez. And you see how the country turned out to be. That to me scares me. That's socialism. And they're bringing in with the cover, oh, we're doing some social justice, you know, whatever. To, to make sure everybody's equal and everybody receiving equal outcome. I don't believe in that. That's what I'm here. So when I see things like that in the local government, that scares me. So I wanna make sure that you have a voice. The conservative people have a voice in this town. There are police is well, well trained, well fun. So we can live in peaceful communities. Right now, I believe for what I hear. On the, on the police side, we're fifty officers now, but on paper will show twelve, fifteen. So that tells me police officers don't have, have a race. We don't have a good retention program in our police department, in Wilmington Police Department. So police officers are looking for a job somewhere else. We haven't been able to fill a lot of positions in the police department. I don't know if you noticed, you don't even see cops anymore.
Not really.
Exactly.
Not a lot.
In a city that is growing so aggressive. So crime is rising up. You have game problems all over the city, shootouts in the middle of the day.
I've heard that.
Yeah, who is gonna want to live in a city like that? So that's primary. To me, we have a law and order. Second is small business. I believe in small business is the backbone of Wilmington's economy. We need to make sure we help a lot. I know I've been talking to a lot of small business. They, they closed for good because of COVID. I'd never understood. I'm all about free market capitalism, but I'm not about chronic capitalism. That's bad. That's as bad as communism. During the COVID, they closed a lot of small business. They told you, they were not able to open, but you have Walmart, Sam's Club. Open for business, but we were not able to open for business. So I was, man, that should not happen. Ever again. Downtown should stay open. We couldn't handle this thing. But where was the city council? They all bowed down to the virus. And I understood in the beginning. But how can you allow this big players to be wide open for business in the small business like myself? Oh, you gotta close. Let their big guys make more money. I'm not about that. That's chronic capitalism.
I didn't even know that's what that was called.
Yeah, it's when the big.
That is, that whole thing was.
Yeah, that's just bad. Because they, see, they, 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 the, the big corporations can bow down to the government. Notice it. Oh, we're gonna push mandate vaccine. So they're all gonna line up because the government's not gonna give them the tax breaks. Or the money, if they're gonna send money to, to the corporations, they're all will obey the big government. But small business like you and I can say, the heck with that. I'm not doing that. I'm not taking a vaccine. I'm not wearing no mask.
I'm not putting a sign on my door that says you gotta wear a mask.
Exactly. I'm not doing, I never did it, by the way. So. That's when they wanna kill the small business. And allow this chronic capitalism to rise up and be in control of everything. So I'm against that. I'm, I'm all about small business.
And once again, how can you not be? You own three, four small businesses.
Very successful business.
You're a working man.
I'm a working man and, and I'm gonna make sure that if you wanna accomplish those things in the city. When I get elected, I'm gonna help you. I'm gonna help you to teach you how an immigrant from Venezuela did it. I wanna share how I did it to those that think there's not, there's no race, there's no color impairing you to do this. It's just some bad politicians. They're using identity politics to take advantage of their communities. And that's what I'm coming for. I'm coming to dismantle that narrow. And some people are afraid of that because I have the receipts. I know what happened in my country because of this idea. And I'm gonna make sure little by little we dismantle that and go back to some common sense. The way it was when I came here. It was not perfect, nothing is perfect, but it was great and we got it once again. May start here, make sure we may make Wilmington great again. That's how you have to run for me.
Damn, you know, I'm gonna get my ass to the polls and vote. You guys get out there and vote. It's so important to vote on a local level. You heard him explain everything. Jonathan, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I mean, that was so eloquent and concise and you did such a great job explaining it.
Oh, no, thank you. I really appreciate.
I'll be out there voting. She needs to get registered. She won't listen to me.
Please tell her to.
Register. I'll be like, girl, register. We need you to, just come vote who I vote for. Trust me, I've done the research.
Okay, well, make sure, tell your friends.
So you're, what you just said, you're for freedom.
Freedom.
Freedom. Great again.
Less government, the less government we have, the more freedoms we have.
Couldn't agree with you more.
You know, the bigger the government, the more control they have over our lives.
Absolutely.
We need to stop here in the local level and then hopefully move up and, and, and the, and the food chain.
Bam. There you have it. Hope, Jonathan, thank you guys for being here.
Thank you so much.
Man, you're awesome. You guys get out there and vote for Jonathan. He's, uh, he's really out here doing this thing.
Thank you so much. If you wanna know more about me, go to Uskateki for city council. And, you know, donate if you can, uh, become a volunteer, uh. Anything you can do to help me out as a volunteer, making phone calls, doing some door knocking, hanging a yard sign in your house. Telling your friends about me, that'll help out.
You got any signs?
Yes, I do.
We'll put one in the yard.
Oh, please do. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
You guys, thanks for watching the podcast. Give me a thumbs up if you liked the video. Give me a thumbs down if you're a hater. We hate you back. Make sure you subscribe to the podcast. We love you guys. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.